Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 25th, 2013. Tonight is kind of a hybrid session. We're going to open with a special session of council and then we'll move into some committee discussions. So, we're going to begin with our special session. We have six council members present, so we do have a quorum. And we have two ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 2213, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Gator Guys LLC to permit a balcony at 63 North Court Street that will encroach over and upon the public right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Fall. I think Member Gosney is going to speak to it? Certainly, we have some people who want to talk. Do you want to?
Well, I'll begin with moving adoption of ordinance 2213.
Okay. Before we go anywhere, do we have anybody?
Do you need a second person?
Excuse me?
Is there a second?
I'm sorry. We have some people who want to speak to this, I believe. Ms. Flanagan, do you want to come to the -- you have three minutes. Time doesn't start till you sign in, please.
I'm Beverly Flanagan at 132 North Lancaster Street, Athens. I have copies of an email I just sent out late today. I don't know if you all had a chance to read it, so you can pass these around.
Thanks, Beverly.
If you wish to follow me. I don't know if I have enough there. Give it a try. All right. I sent you a letter a week ago, and you've all read that, I believe. I'm not going to reread that letter. It would take too long. In fact, the first part of this letter reiterates the three concerns that I expressed in that letter, and I'll just recap them very briefly and then go on to my main point tonight, which has to do with my reading of code. So, the first point we made, several of us made, of course, is that the police chief, the fire chief, the city planner, and the code director have all expressed concerns about the proposed four-foot balcony. Many of us feel that you want to respect their concerns, which seem quite legitimate to us in terms of noise, excessive numbers of people on a balcony, the possibility of injuries and falls, even death that has occurred, and, of course, the fact that missiles are thrown down on the street quite regularly from these balconies. My second basic point had to do with the insults that many of us have experienced from people standing on balconies, myself included, and you've heard from several other people already, either by email or in person, about the often sexist, but not only sexist remarks thrown down at people strolling on the streets, simply exercising their right to enjoy their street. Court Street is the street for all of us, and we would like you to respect the right of all of us, students and non-students, to enjoy that street, especially after dark, when it becomes problematic. And then the third point that I made, and again, you've read it, has to do with the economic argument, which suggests that all the plans that have gone into a four-foot balcony might -- should be respected, in a sense. The builders will have no problem filling their apartments in that building, whether there's a balcony at all, a balcony of four feet, a balcony of three feet, a balcony of two feet, or whatever. So, it seems to me that's a specious argument. But since then, I've looked at city code, and with the help of a couple of other people, and it seems to me that one section is especially relevant here. It's Section 230308, zoning code, general regulations and permitted modifications. And I'll read this part because I want to get it accurately. Certain architectural features may project into required yards as follows. Any bay windows, balconies, fireplaces, uncovered stairways, uncovered landings, and chimneys may project a distance not exceeding three feet. Is that three minutes already? All right. I'd like to finish this section, if you don't mind. Not exceeding three feet, provided that such features do not occupy, in the aggregate, more than one-third of the length of the building on which they are located. Now, this is called general regulations and permitted modifications, and precedes any specific zone regulations, so I have to assume it applies to all specific building structures in all zones, not just residential buildings in residential zones. Now, I'm aware, of course, that a revocable license can override code, and that nothing specific is said in code about balconies overhanging commercial buildings. Clearly, there's a need for that, and I believe that's going to be worked on soon, I hope. But in the meantime, it seems to me that that section could serve as a guideline for such constructions at present. Three feet seems like a reasonable maximum limit, even if many of us actually would prefer a smaller balcony or no balcony at all. Three feet seems like a reasonable compromise. So, I would therefore encourage council to amend the present proposal to allow only a 36-inch depth for the balcony with the full concrete barrier between the two apartments already approved last week. While this acknowledges that there will be some kind of balcony, we accept that likelihood, it would reduce the potential for noise and harm by simply limiting the number of people who could stand on that balcony at any given time. However, if council approves the four-foot proposal, the full four-foot proposal, I would hope the mayor would exercise his right to override that vote and insist on a smaller balcony. I understand he has the right to work with the builder on his own, but I would urge you, first of all, to amend the present proposal to three feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the issue? Okay. Mayor Wile?
I was not aware of this section of the code, 230308. Realized when we were looking at this, of course, it was Title 41, where all the requirements were either met or got a variance through the Athens Zoning Board of Appeals. I was looking at this as a right-of-way issue only. In theory, I think if anything's in Title 23, usually requires a supermajority to pass if you're overriding something within 23 zoning code, although I don't believe it's really addressed one way or the other in your ordinance, right-of-way ordinance. But again, this would be -- I don't remember if they got a variance from the zoning board of appeals for the balcony. I thought they dodged it at that time.
I can speak. No, they did not.
Okay.
There was never any discussion of the balcony, all the way through, if briefly at Planning Commission, but all the way through the BZA, all the way through the Planning Commission, that was never brought up.
Well, as I say, I'm not aware of this section of the code, but again, it's in a zoning area, so that's a different animal than just a right-of-way issue, I'll point out.
At the Board of Zoning Appeals, the question was asked about a balcony because they saw the pictures, the architectural drawings, and they said, "No, there will not be a balcony," and they moved on.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Where are we going? So, all those in favor of ordinance 2213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
No.
Can I just use your hands for?
Okay. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. All of a sudden, do we need a recess? Given the most recent information that we have regarding the balconies, I would say that the size is not appropriate, so I would say no.
So, it did not pass?
So, it did not pass. Moving on, ordinance 2313, an ordinance granting the renewal of a revocable license to Kimes Conglucence Center, 75 Kimes Lane, to allow a directional sign on the public right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Gosney again.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2313.
Second.
And this is for a revocable license on the south side of town for the Kimes Center, the Kimes Homes.
Again, I'll just make the point that this is a sign on the city's right-of-way. It's a directional sign for people who need to know how to get to Kimes.
And it's been there for many years. It's existing today.
All those in favor of ordinance 2313 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Unless there is some interruption regarding any reading, I'll just proceed with the reading second ordinance. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 2413, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement for grant funds through the Transportation Alternatives Program for the Richland South Project and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2513, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Richland South Improvements Project 244. Ordinance 2613, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Columbus Road Bike Path Spur Project 270. Ordinance 2713, an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2613, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about this?
Absolutely. Ordinance 2813.
Yes. 2813 has three appropriations requests. One is for $32,000, General Fund, lands and buildings, and $45,000 for community center funds, 271, and the last one is $17,000 to Law Enforcement Trust Fund, 293, TC 200, 300 for law enforcement software, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. There was some hesitation last council meeting about this ordinance, and it had to do with the software. And what we're talking about in terms of police software is not something like Microsoft Excel or PowerPoint. This is a type of software that data from a cellphone can be extracted from, downloaded to a computer, and then analyzed by the law enforcement agencies. I understand currently, when there's a need to do this, the police department sends the cellphone off to the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and they work their magic there on their computers, and then results come back. I'm very leery of this type of thing. I've been in computers most of my life. I think I built my first computer when I was 14. It was nice, but I know that there's a lot of good uses that come from computer software like this, but also that we have to safeguard our citizens' rights and civil liberties to ensure that it's being used for its proper purposes. I sat down this afternoon and wrote a list of questions. I'm going to send them on to you. I'm not going to read them all here, but it's mainly just to jog my memory, because it's not as good as it used to be. But among the things that I have concern with is, is there a protocol in place, a set of guidelines, that the law enforcement agency will follow that shows how the -- under what circumstances the cellphone would be taken, you know, obviously under a warrant, I believe Ohio case law specifies that, but after that, what then happens? Where does that data that's now been extracted go? Where does it reside? Is it shared? Does it go out on the Internet? Does it stay on a computer? How many copies of this software will we be obtaining? Will it reside on just one computer all the time, or will it move around? Or could it be copied and put on another computer for a patrolman, let's say? And then, once everything is done according to the law and to the guidelines, what happens then to that data that was extracted? Now, everything has been settled, the case is over with, where does it go? Does it stay on the computer here in Athens, or is it deleted? Or does it, you know, where? What happens to it? So, these may seem like kind of nitpicky questions, but we've moved into a whole new age of electronics and what computers can do and can't do, and for my 30 years of working with information, how it can be used and misused, I would feel much easier in voting in the affirmative for this if I knew the answers to these questions. So, as I said, I'm going to get this out to you, but this is just what was popping up in my head, and I'm sure by tomorrow I have about five more questions, so.
So, I think it's a chain of evidence question and a policy around obtaining, you know, cellphone information and all that kind of thing. And while I can share with you that we have things from investigations that are taking up valuable space, that are not allowed to be disposed of because it hasn't been resolved. So, what the chief has proposed is to actually have a seized laptop, and this software would be solely installed on that. We have the actual company name, Celebrite Ultimate Touch, and again, you know more than I do, Z R T R, and a secure view that totals this amount plus some for training. I'd also like to mention to council that you should have received the Chief of Police, Law Enforcement Trust Fund and Drug Funds Report for the last year that he submitted January 23rd, and proceeds from forfeited property. He indeed does have a policy, and one is to pay costs for complex investigations or provide reasonable technical training or expertise, or other law enforcement purposes the city council determines to be appropriate, and he is indeed requesting this. It cannot be that they seize a cellphone. Somebody has to either, like you say, legally have it seized by the courts, or someone is willingly giving that. And there was some dialogue about how this can help with some domestic violence cases that they're getting on a regular basis, but I'll be happy to answer your additional questions and also connect you directly with the police chief on this.
Member Gosney, do you have a favorite?
No, I think it would be good to have the questions answered, and just so that we do have policies in place that people are familiar with, so that they're -- and we might well have those policies, but it's good for us to be, you know, knowledgeable about them, since we're appropriating the money for it.
Mayor?
Again, it requires a warrant, I believe, or the person to turn over their phone. And in many cases, the dialogue with somebody's harassing somebody electronically by text, many times people delete their own -- clean up their own phones because they don't want to look at it, and this will be able to retrieve it. What you're looking at is a software package of at least three different systems and the training that's involved in that. The turnaround time, I think, conversation with the last time they had to send out the BCI was three to four weeks. Okay? So, in terms of some kind of ongoing investigation, three to four weeks may be adequate or may be too long, especially with something in terms of stalking, bullying, sexting, texting, whatever they call it. So, these are why we'd be looking at that. And again, like any evidence, it has to have a chain of command, so you could actually say nobody's messed with it since when you got it off the phone to when it gets to court. And again, we have lots of equipment lying around, we have lots of evidence lying around on unclosed cases.
Right.
Now, security, well, I assume it's going to be in its own laptop. It won't be hooked up, and we don't transmit this stuff anyway all over the place.
It is a wired system. It's not a wireless system that will be out there.
And last but not least, this is really an administrative thing. You just appropriate the money. If you don't want to appropriate the money, that's well and good, but we'll have to use it somewhere sooner or later.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Now, I like the questions, but at the same time, to my mind, this is like, you know, where do we buy this stuff? And if you're concerned, you may want to talk to the chief, but at the same time, I don't think it's really a question of where he spends that money at that point.
A number of citizens have asked also, so they're speaking on behalf of that, so.
Many.
And I think it's due diligence on council's part to ask these questions. I think we're obligated. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we're elected here, so as long as I'm here, I'll ask. I mean, I get the answers that I like to hear, but.
Go ahead. Did you have -- is it possible that the chief could come next week?
He had offered, so I will get with him on that.
Okay.
And I think some other council members have.
I just -- this came through the Joint Police Advisory Council. We had a long discussion within that committee about the purchase of the software and the police chief's take on the software. I appreciate the procedural questions. That's well and good, I think. But one of the things I also want to kind of augment to the whole conversation is, in terms of, you know, possible sexual harassment or bullying or whatever, but one of the other things, the way I look at this, is this is also a tool that can be used to augment the Amber Alert if someone's phone is picked up and it could provide possible leads. They already have the software to be used with computers. There's really nothing new and special about this. It can't grab radio transmissions or cellular transmissions and start monitoring things like that. It can only pick up on what's on that phone in terms of erased data, data or phone numbers, things of that nature. So, through my lens, I view this as a powerful tool to use in solving cases, but I do understand the issue of what goes on, but it is like the mayor is just saying this is an appropriations issue.
And again, he has some of that capability in terms of computer. What you're saying is trying to bring it into the mobile phone area where it exists right now, where most people are using. Computers are pretty much on the way out in terms of desktops and laptops even, so I wouldn't say that because I'm stuck with it myself, but at the same time, I know that a lot of the things that go on that they need to track are not going to be found on a laptop or desktop.
Yeah, I actually just had a quick question. I guess I'm sort of coming at this from the opposite angle of Councilman Reisner, in the sense that while I'm very well-versed in the Fourth Amendment, and it's been -- most of my background as an attorney has been in dealing in investigations and in the criminal law, so I'm very well-versed in issues of search and seizure that would be applicable here, but I know nothing at all when it comes to the technical aspects of the software or what exactly this allows us to do. So, just to -- I wanted just to kind of clarify, from my own understanding, that this software would -- everything that this software would enable the police department to do, they already have that capability, they just have to send away to BCI in order to have that done. So, this doesn't really give them any new tools in the toolbox. It just helps them to be able to expedite getting certain information. Is that correct?
Right. And recently, we had a reason to conduct a search of a handed-over cellphone, as it were, and it took three weeks, and time was ticking, so.
Okay. Thank you. Member Gosney?
So, my initial pause at this appropriation was, and I disagree with the mayor, I think that council, when we're asked to spend $17,000 or appropriate $17,000, I don't think that money belongs to any particular department in the city. I think if it's a purchase that we have to appropriate money for, I think we have say over whether or not we approve of that purchase. But in terms of this particular purchase, I think my initial question was, could that money be better spent? And it possibly could be, it possibly couldn't be. Depends on what our need is for this type of software. But we use it once a year, twice a year, 20 times a year, and I haven't heard -- I had some communication with the police chief, but I haven't had any idea what our need is if we would be sharing this with other departments, other counties nearby, like, I know, Washington County. We were told we can go there if we need to use this.
We can. The chief has indicated to me that he would utilize this equipment according to investigations three to four times a week. So, that is an existing need, as it were. There was some discussion about cost sharing with the High University. I don't believe that's been resolved, and I don't know, Steve, from the J-PAC, whether or not you got a sense of that or not.
It did come up at J-PAC, and Chief Powers did mention that they were working towards something for shared, again, in terms of whether or not. They've completely ironed out everything, but I believe that's the direction they were moving in, to where it was shared. I even threw out the possibility of sharing across with the sheriff's department, to which Chief Pyle said it could certainly -- it would not leave the city and go over to the sheriff's office to be used, but if the sheriff's office needed to use the phone, they could bring it over, and it would be analyzed that way. So, but that's not a cost share in terms of city to county share.
The last I heard is that there was talk about sharing with a High University PD. Again, it comes down to, there was two issues. One is, if it isn't a computer, where does it reside if you're sharing it? And then, of course, then you're back to the security issue there if you have this thing being traveled around. In terms of the sheriff's department, I think he said that would be almost too much because then you wouldn't be able -- they would lose the ability to actually schedule and do things. They'd start slowing down their response time as well. Again, he said two to three times a week for me as well. And again, it has, you know, it goes the whole, you know, some of it in terms of everything from, you know, from domestic issues to drug deals, you know, and everything in between. So, you know, I personally like the fact that they'll spend at least $2,000 doing training. That's what I think they need, more training in general. So, I don't see as a lost time in that sense.
And then, just a quick follow-up. I've heard it takes two weeks to get something back from the BCI, which for some situations would be too long.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a rush, if there's a need for domestic violence or some stalking case or something like that, would -- do we currently have the capability to get the information quickly, within a day, if we go to Washington County, or is there a rush process with BCI if there's an urgent need?
I don't think we can rush what they're doing, but I don't know. The impression I got is that even though we have an office here, the software is not here, it's in Columbus. And, you know, basically, you could send it up by courier, but it's still, you know, a day up and a day down, half a day up and down at that point.
Another point I'd like to point out, and I understand, and even the chief's policy says, "Or for such other law enforcement purposes the city council determines to be appropriate," but these funds are specific. They're not out of the general fund. They're money that they've taken in that has to be then reused for law enforcement purposes.
My questions are more raised from what the public has been curious about, and certainly, I understand that we have a well-trained police force who understand, you know, the chain of evidence, and they're professional and all that kind of thing. But again, when we get into these kind of issues, there's just more information out there, and I think that's all that I'm asking about, is to make sure that those exist. I believe they exist, and I'm sorry I didn't refer back to the June 23rd report. I don't know if the actual -- our actual policy's in that, in that report?
The police chief's policy that has been authorized.
So, I just think maybe as a general comment to the public is that they need to know that there are pretty strict guidelines, you know. I know there was one comment made to me about logging in and logging out, just so you know, but I know that with chain of evidence, there are certain things that you have to do, and just to make sure that the public is aware of that, because I don't think the public is generally aware of what police procedure is.
Some of the questions I had was whether it requires a warrant specific for the phone, and he said, the chief said, yes, because technically, you can, if you arrest somebody, you can search them.
Right.
But the question is, you're searching for weapons or contraband or something like that, and that does not fall into that. I said, "You can't just serve a bench warrant and pick them up and say, and confiscate everything in their vicinity," the way I understand it, because that has occurred, you know, that's one way the police can get something, if they say, "Well, you know, we're going to arrest you, but why don't you move into this room so we can arrest you there?" That does not occur. That can't occur because it is a piece of information, the way I'm being told by the chief.
Mayor, the correct term you use is legally in their possession, so somebody could give that.
Yes.
And that's a case where you have a lot of people say, you know, this last investigation was somebody saying, "Here, here's my phone. I want to, you know, prove this, resolve this," you know, and that's how it would probably work for the most part.
And I guess that's kind of where I was getting with my earlier question as well, is obviously, regardless of what this software does, it does not empower the police department legally to do anything that they otherwise couldn't already do.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, the warrant requirement is applicable without some exigent circumstance, it would be the legal term used there, or unless, in the case like with the earlier investigation, where the owner of the phone consented to have that phone searched. So, all of the legal safeguards, you know, that would apply would still apply regardless of whether we would have the software. It would just allow the police to be able to. would have the software. It would just allow the police to be able to, to expedite an investigation without having to wait weeks or months to get something back from BCI, if I'm understanding the software.
Senator Higginson.
I guess I'm curious about that, too. When you say, is it possible for, say, a victim or complainant to say, here, you know, I erased all those messages, but he's still doing it, you know. So you hand them your phone and they can do that? Is there a warrant involved? And just as someone who's very conscientious about our record keeping, we have our own server up there to protect our financial software. We're very loyal to our record retention schedule. You know, what, how long does that hang in there? And what happens with all the other information they find off of someone's phone and, you know, and the protections for, it's already been brought up, the protection for that laptop that has that information?
Again, we're talking about our police department. So I feel that they're, they're abiding by the law since they're chartered with enforcing.
Well, I guess I would like to, I would know this now, but say I was being stalked or harassed by someone or bullied, and I wanted help, and I was first deleting all these, and I gave you my phone, you know, then what happens to all my other information? I'm not the person who's been arrested. You know what I mean?
But you're assisting in there.
I think there's a different legal, you know, if you're the person, you know, the suspect as opposed to the victim, and how your information should be protected.
If you're the suspect, then you probably have a right to refuse giving them the phone.
Unless they get a warrant. And that's fine. I'm not talking about the suspect. I'm talking about the victim who they say, well, you know, show us what you have. And then they do this, and they have lots of other information on there besides just those harassing tests. You know what I mean? Then how do they protect that victim? Am I making sense?
You are to me.
Yeah.
You know, if they go through my texts and try to find ones I've deleted to find the harassing ones, they're going to find, you know, a million other ones from my kids and my husband and my, you know, I mean. Do I want them hanging on to that in their computer indefinitely?
I suspect they wouldn't, but I don't know.
I think I'll just have to bring these up to the police chief and try to see if I can satisfy.
I'd like to see, you know, some kind of retention policy or some policy addressing superfluous.
Member Reisner?
I just want to mention one thing. I keep hearing this argument of, or why would happen if I deleted a bunch of stuff and I was being harassed and so on. If you delete a bunch of stuff off your cell phone, you go to your cell phone provider and you say, please restore it. That's, that's how you, how you get it back.
It's in the hard drive in the sky.
Well, it's, it's either there or it's there. But if you're the.
It is there.
I think one of the emails going back and forth, I was hearing, is that they, some of these companies only hold it for about five days. And again, you know, you'll get, if you delete it, it will be eventually overwritten as you, depending on the memory and capacity of your phone.
Yeah.
Member Reisner, could you make sure that you pass your questions on to the mayor soon? And then, Service Safety Director, can you ask the chief if he could come to our meeting next Monday, please? And I know you all are answering the questions, but to hear it from the chief's mouth will make a difference, I think. Thank you. We're going to move on. Ordinance, Ordinance 2913, and ordinance amending Ordinance 07511 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code. Ordinance 3013, and ordinance reaffirming Ordinance 01204, authorizing the City of Athens to pick up the statutorily required contribution to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund for the participating employees in the Athens City Police Department. Ordinance 3113, and ordinance reaffirming Ordinance 01204, authorizing the City of Athens to pick up the statutorily required contribution to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund for the participating employees in the Athens City Fire Department. Ordinance 3213, and ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between State and Carpenter on Saturday, June 29, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight for Ohio Brew Week. Ordinance 3313, and ordinance declaring certain equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry, I, okay.
Are we modifying the Brew Week?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Something that I just heard about today, so.
And we haven't. So we're going to move backwards. Ordinance 3213. Member Gosney, you know about?
No, I don't. But I believe we have someone here who can fill us in.
Is there an expert, right?
Let you pay attention.
It literally came up early this afternoon.
Yes. Actually.
I'm sorry. Could you sign in again? So we'll have that record and then we'll go. I'm sorry.
Okay. The ordinance is to close State Street from College to pretty much where Domino's is.
No, Court Street.
Your amendment request is to add an additional section.
Okay. My amendment request is to add an additional section. You can understand, I just got this, too. So anyways, from, from College Street to, we're going to obviously do the Court Street thing. Okay, we all understand that. And we all, we got the times correct. All right, Debbie?
She does.
And anyways, so there's also another area that we would like to shut off. And that would be from State Street moving westbound at the split at College, from College to the parking lot where Passion Works is at, and then turn that into an open area where there's also artisans selling, you know, their wares and such. So, does anybody understand that?
I do. So you, do you want to go up to Dale's BP in that one lane? So there would be a turn lane to go back over on the other side of Domino's? Or you just want in front of Passion Works?
Yes, one in front of Passion Works and not go into the Dale's area. It would stop before that. It would be from College going westbound into, you know, pretty much where Domino's Pizza is. And stop at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
I might be able to shed a little extra light on this. Is that, what Mr. Gates is saying is that it would go, as I understand it as well, through the, with Ohio Brew Week, that it would be through AACA, the Athens Area Citizens for the Arts have requested, like he was saying, on, on, not all the way to College, as I understand it, it would be more in line with right where the Domino's is, that sweeping curve or corner there, it's not even a corner, where the Y is. It would essentially be from the beginning of that Y up to Court Street. So it'd be a very small segment, and it would only be on the west end or westbound side of that small segment.
Do we have addresses?
So we could make it kind of accurate rather than? I think the point being that for safety is you just need to know where the detours are going to be, because you wouldn't be able to enter and come upstate that way. You'd have to go around.
Okay. I'm a little confused here myself, because from my information, it was at College to, on the westbound side of, of State Street to the parking lot of where Passion Works is. You're saying the loop?
Including that section. What I've been told is you are having an artisans fair in a parking lot at Passion Works. So you want to have it pedestrian friendly. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's outside of the F permit area.
Right.
So there will not be alcohol served, but this is to allow for this artisan fair.
Right.
Could we have a map picture or something?
I'm looking one up.
We had a sketch on a piece of paper.
A piece of paper.
We have an iPad here.
Is there an urgency to make the exact amendment tonight? Or could we do that on third reading? And if we need to pass under suspension, we could try to do that. So, so we could get an exact map.
Get your map, okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm kind of confused here also, because I was getting a visualization of what I was told by the AACA. And it was just going to be basically the part that's going in front of Passion Works, Zoe's, et cetera. It was going to stop at the parking lot that we're also going to be utilizing. Wouldn't be on the other side, because we don't want to close off.
Right. That's my understanding, too.
Directions. Then it would be a major safety issue, so.
We'll get a map to you with some better.
Okay. So we'll, we'll look to probably amend this on third reading. And it doesn't appear that there's a time urgency on this. So if we amend it, we'll have time to pass it, with plenty of time to close the street by June 29.
By June, yeah.
June 29.
I think it would be good to hear exactly what they want.
Exactly.
Just so we know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what they want. They've told me what they want.
All right.
Can you tell us what they want?
They want festival, how do you say it, booths on the part from College Street going west on State Street. So you're on the west, here's Domino's on the west side, over to the parking lot where they're going to be utilizing the other part of it. So you're blocking off one west side street of State Street. That's my complete understanding, and that's all the discussions that I've had at, with, and everybody from the AACA. And to my knowledge, that has not changed since then. And so I look at it, and I kind of see that there's difficulties in terms of, you know, approaching this. But on the other side, it's not that really big of a deal if you look at it, because we're not blocking off Court Street. If you move all the way out to Court Street, then I'm thinking, you know, now you got a problem. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Same here. So, okay. So one other thing I wanted to add is that, I might as well go off for the whole, whole shebang here. When we, when we've done these things in the past, you know, Boogie on the Bricks, our Brew Week, we've also opened up the parking garage for free parking. Is that a potential possibility?
We did that for Boogie on the Bricks, I believe is what you've done that in the past, so.
So that's not a problem, or is that an issue?
No, this is something you're making a request.
Okay, I'm making a request that we open up the parking garage for free parking, since we are inviting a lot of people from out of town. And I think it's very hospitable to offer us, you know, those visitors from out of town, free parking.
On Saturday, just during this event.
Just on Saturday, the 29th.
Same, same timeframe?
Yes.
10:00 a.m. to midnight?
Exactly.
We'll probably put it up for an ordinance next week.
Okay.
See how it goes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to repeat, Ordinance 3313, and ordinance declaring certain equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. And then we'd have a ordinance for first reading. Ordinance 3713, and ordinance authorizing the design of a new production well in the Armitage Field, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to check real quick about whether or not this was requesting suspension from the executive branch.
I don't think it does.
It doesn't even have an emergency clause.
Okay, so we're good. I'll just share. So we discussed this in committee meeting. This is a $32,000 project to begin the process of planning, siding, testing, design, and permitting the new production well in the Armitage Field area. We acknowledged that the last water well that had been drilled in the city was 1983, and that the capacity, the wells, production capacity has been diminishing over time, the wells in general, with clog screens and parts that are corroding. So this would help alleviate some of the burden. Thank you.
Member Butler, I'm just wondering what the cost to drill a new well. This is just the siding.
About $150,000.
$150,000?
$1,000.
To, to, to drill a new well?
That's the estimate.
Okay.
Does that include the pump?
I think it includes everything.
Equipment and everything.
This is probably, we probably wouldn't be putting it into the 24 budget.
That was from the proposal that we had from the HD Water Services, correct? Data.
That's actually, yeah. That's some of the siding part, but the other ones are actually the repair of the hospital well field. And that's something I think, I think Director Stone is still working out in terms of the timetable and the dollars, right?
So that's also in addition to the $32,000?
That will come up as another ordinance, obviously, yes.
Right, for the $150,000.
Member Reisner?
I'm not quite sure who to direct the question to. Probably Member Butler. Does this planning also include some form of observation well? Since I think the Armitage Field's a new well, field, isn't it? So do we have any?
It's a new, you've talked about monitoring wells?
Monitoring wells, yeah.
Probably we didn't, I don't know if it is, the price includes that. We have put out, we have several, I think we have actually at least two or three around each well right now. So I have to assume that we'll, we'll add one or two along the way. But I don't know. It depends on how, probably it ends up where we sided. If we sided next to a monitoring well, should be a problem. But I suspect we'll go away from the monitoring wells and the other wells.
They usually won't, yeah.
We put, installed a couple new ones last year, and I think the plan is a couple more this year, so.
Right.
Checking our water.
More data points you have, the better off you are.
This is, ordinance was read for the first time. And anybody have anything else for the special session? If not, we will call that adjourned and move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Reisner?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two agenda items and two miscellaneous items to discuss tonight. The first one being an engineering study that the city administration is requesting for the municipal parking garage. The last time that I think we've had some extensive design, design work and repair work has been seven to eight years. So the estimated cost for this will likely be $40,000 to $50,000. We could, we can share with you that I think there have been some pieces coming loose from the outside edge of the parking garage due to spalting. Is that the correct word?
Yes. Yeah, where the repairs were done last time, we had some spalding on it, and it fell off last Monday, I believe. A piece came down, told about the size of pizza pie. So that's a piece of concrete that we need to check. We had our boom truck up there looking at other pieces. We took a couple loose pieces off as well. I've actually been talking about trying to do an engineering study sometime for the past three or four years. The scope of it has always thrown me off, because the question arises, how big is testing you do? If you remember, probably about 15 years ago, we went into debt to repair the parking garage. We did some major upgrades. The next question, of course, is what level of engineering do we want to do? I mean, you can do just a visual, you can do borings, testing throughout the core. But we're waiting for a response. We've talked to, gee, I think it's MS Consultants right now in terms of the, they did some past work with us. And we're going to try getting an estimate of what it will cost to do an engineering study. So that's what we're going to be going toward at this point. I do not have a dollar amount. I think we have enough money, adequate money to do the testing subsequent, depending on how much we need to do, we'll pay control of what happens here.
You have $305,000 in the unappropriated resource.
$305,000, okay. So we have, we have money to spend. And I, I think it needs to be done. So I'm just giving you a heads up, and I'm hoping I'll get a number for you, at least to start the engineering forward.
Thank you. Questions for Member Reisner or the mayor? Member Reisner, moving on?
Yes. We have a Nature Works grant, and Councilmember Patterson will be talking about that.
Thank you. The Nature Works grant, 2013 Nature Works grant, comes out of Ohio Department of Natural Resources, which has allotted $22,068 to Athens County. Resources, which has allotted $22,068 to Athens County. It's a 75-25 match for this particular grant application, which is due May 1st. And the project that was put forth through Arts Park and Recreation is essentially a grant for $29,333.33, of which the city's contribution to this particular grant, if funded, would be $7,265.33. What this would be for is for the West State Street Park, down by the baseball diamonds, kind of situated among the quad. There's these four baseball diamonds down there, Three Rivers, Fenway, Field Nine, and Riverfront Ballpark. But right in the middle would be a blacktopped or concrete platform or base, and on top of that would be a all-purpose, essentially kind of a rubberized surface that would be on there for a basketball court. They can also inlay in there four-square or hopscotch or anything else that can go into the design for this particular multipurpose activity field, which would be a nice addition to the West State Street Park.
Yes, Councilmember.
What's the approximate dimensions of this multipurpose field?
That is a great question.
Well, there's not a lot of room there.
I don't believe maybe Service Safety Director knows the size.
Is it the size of about one basketball court?
I believe it's either half a court or a full court.
Yeah, that's about all.
Adding the hopscotch.
I was going to say, that's about all there's room for there. There's not a lot of room.
Yeah, there's already a playground.
Right.
Right.
Playground equipment sitting in that area.
That's what I thought.
So this would augment that playground area.
Maybe the 120-feet length, is that a, I don't know what a regulation says.
What's a regular basketball court look like? I mean, in terms of size, paced off. Anybody know?
Basketball family, I can't tell.
It would look like this.
Thank you.
Well, looking at, you know, again, who's pricing it, kind of, and the top end here says its width is 59 feet by 120, and that's a $20,000, $21,000 expenditure on that, plus extra money if you add additional lines, I guess. But I don't know what a normal size is. Is that too small, too large? Let's see.
I think the Google machine is saying somewhere around 94 feet.
94 feet.
But we can double-check.
And just to clarify, this is an authorization to apply?
Yes.
For the grant? Competitive grant process, and it does commit us to cost share, and do we know the account?
I would take it out of recreation cap, and I think there's a little over $300,000 available now.
Okay.
And they do have a sample resolution I'll provide to the clerk, or you can use one that you've used in the past. It is a reimbursable grant, so if we're awarded, you would be authorizing the full amount, and then we get the 75% back, so.
Okay.
I would only add one other thing, that that is a flood-prone area down there. It doesn't drain well, you know, they've engineered those ball fields to try to keep the water away from those, so now you're going to add some additional surface there. It's just something to remember. I know that park pretty well.
And it is a permeable surface that they'll be putting in, so I think that will help some, but good comment about the engineering on the area. Councilmember Butler?
Just to add, it appears the National Basketball Association official court length is 94 feet by 50 feet. High school courts are slightly smaller.
Okay. And we can confirm for you the actual size that this will be later on.
And recreational activities are appropriate in a floodway or floodplain area, so, and won't comply with their own stormwater permitting system.
Okay, thank you.
Two items under miscellaneous, the first one being just a brief update on the university estates. We did have some discussion about this last week, and realizing that we have portions of the road that have been in that area that have been accepted by the city, but then other portions that have not been accepted, and some interest on the part of the property owners, as they've approached various councilmember, Butler, and Patterson, and I think the city administration, about submitting petitions for a possible assessment process. So at this point, I don't know if we have formal receipt of petitions.
I believe I sent a copy to council at one point.
So we do have 75, I think I saw a copy at one point, that 75% of the property owners have submitted.
Yes.
The time constraints on this would be that if we would seek the assessment process, we would, if things align, and if there is agreement amongst all parties to proceed with it, there's several sets of ordinances that we have to move through, the resolution of necessity, then the assignment of the assessment boards, in case there are disputes about that, and then obviously the borrowing of money, and then the actual appropriation of funds for the repair. Several years ago, when the estimate was made, the estimate was about $655,000. The estimated cost right now is $715,000. So I just wanted to make people aware of the fact that it's being worked on, and still interest, I think, on the part of the property owners. President Sands?
Is our goal still to try to move ahead in this calendar year?
I think there is, and the urgency would be to try and move forward in the next month if we were to get all of the ordinances passed, so that the assessments could be placed on the, for those who wish to pay over a period of time, so that they could be placed on the property taxes. And I believe that that notice has to go to the auditor's office by, the county treasurer's office by September 1, and they post by September 30. So that's, so we need to move along, I suppose, if we think this is workable, as quickly as possible.
I was just wondering, on the, one of the estimates that I had seen as far as just the legislation that it would take to get rolling, beginning with that resolution of necessity, the estimate that I had seen would have required in order for us to hit the construction window this year to essentially be able to pass a lot of things on suspension. Is that your understanding as well? And I just say that to underscore the point that there would have to be near unanimous agreement on council with the project going forward, just in order to have the votes to suspend, in order to hit all of those targets.
Good at them in time.
Almost every single one says passed in one reading, starting with April.
So I just wanted to put that out there to make sure that we need to have pretty close to unanimous support for that on council in order to move forward.
Other questions from other councilmembers?
Well, we all had received the email today, and I don't want to dredge up old history or anything like that, but there do seem to still be a few people out there that aren't very happy with the situation, and I think it has more to do with the history of the city annexing the property. And I know I wasn't around for those days, I just know what I read in the newspaper and whatnot, so I hope that the people that sign on up there, that there's a good amount that'll sign on. I think that's very important, and we've just heard, we haven't seen anything yet that shows how many people signed on.
We do have a memo from Andy Stone, and I think that was distributed.
Unless the mayor attached at the back, there's actually a corporate resolution from Citizens Bank, and it also has the signatures of the different proprietors.
It may have been at the finance auditor meeting.
Here, I've got an extra page.
I don't think I got one.
Basically, there were two sections, one is the, and I'm sorry, I thought you got it all. The front part, of course, is the timetable, and the narrative by Director Stone. The latter parts, I think page three is a, four, rather, I should say, is a corporate resolution from the Citizens Bank, authorizing them to go forward. So they represent at least 50% of the cost of this. Then as petition put together, essentially by John Wharton, he went to a lawyer, looked at it, and started getting petitions out there. The addendum, of course, that is the total cost, you'll notice part of the back end of it has a cost for, we're going to cover some of it, because we've accepted a portion of the road that still needs repair, about $67,000 of it. And then at the next several pages are essentially signatures of various lots that are there. If you look at the timeline, he talks about, and I think he's off on it, because he talks about starting it up April 8, but actually the regular session is April 1, I believe, isn't it? So.
Give us a little bit more time.
I'm not sure that that means more time, actually. It could be the opposite.
And again, there's two thrusts to this. One is to get it fixed, because it is deteriorating. Well, introduction to committee, April 1 is the regular session.
April 8, I'm sorry.
April 8? No, that's a regular. If it's the 8th is a Monday, then first is a Monday.
I think when he said introduced, he may have meant proff to committee. That was my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Okay, well.
So we, and I think that Auditor Heck shared with us last week that the company issuing or providing for the bond also has a petition, which may have some additional conditions on it, and that's something we'd need to work through the details on also.
You mean the present bond?
No, not the present one.
Oh, there's a bond counsel.
Our bond counsel.
You know, I could have consulted, but I think that was for one thing, before we knew that they had a petition prepared by an attorney, for one thing. And yes, the sample draft petition that he sent me was much more involved than what they have, but I can't speak to the legality of that, so that would be up to our law director.
Yeah, they're basically, I mean, long story short, there is no prescribed petition in the ORC itself. The ORC sets forth the information that has to be on the petition, so that's not the sort of thing that the City of Athens has, you know, these sorts of petitions that we can just hand out for people to fill out. It's something that has to be prepared by, you know, and my understanding that they had legal counsel in the preparation of this petition, so as long as it's got the relevant information on there, it's not like it has to be on a specific form, you know, the way an auditor.
I think our bond counsel, you know, airs on the side of caution, is pretty detail-oriented, and so he added a lot of other things. And we did talk on the phone, and that if there are people who don't agree, or who change their minds down the line because they are having trouble selling their property with this additional assessment or whatever, that, you know, we might have some challenges, but, you know, who knows? That might never happen.
But the nature of challenge would be essentially going through an assessment board, essentially, you know, it's no different than what was done before in terms of assessment of sidewalks. The idea is if you create assessment boards, no? I know, yes.
It's certainly possible. I mean, people can, well, as we've certainly seen with university estate, people can file lawsuits for any reason or no reason. And in this case, you know, that someone, is it possible that someone could say, well, something was flawed about the petition process from the start, the city never should have started moving forward? I mean, somebody can always try to make that argument, which is why, you know, it's important to try to, to make sure that all of the, you know, the Ts are being crossed and all the Is dotted in this case, and that all of the information that needs to be on there is on there. But again, you know, that said, we don't have a set petition that, you know, it has to be exactly this way, it just has to contain the relevant information, so. And I haven't seen the bond counsel petition with that as well.
Oh, I thought I said that, too. Yeah, and we talked about, we both said we do, and probably neither one of us sent it to you after we talked last week.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind sending that, I guess.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a look at anything we need to take a look at, again, understanding that we're under a pretty tight time window here, if in fact we want to get moving on construction.
Because, I don't know, we can say they had an attorney prepare this, but then once we take this and say, okay, you've got all the signatures with this petition, then I, I'm not an attorney, then are we accepting that petition? And then if it's not appropriate, I don't know.
Again, the reason why we're doing the petition is so we have buy-in, at least from the big, you know, the Citizens Bank won, but after that, everybody else, the majority of the people, so we don't have to go through a lengthy process of appeals. Technically, we could do this cold, without even talking to anybody, just, you know, walk in and say, we're going to do the assessment process. So we've been trying to get, you know, as I say, a conversation going with the residents up there, to make sure that they know what's coming at them. And I understand, anything can stop it, you know?
I guess my main point is just to point out that, you know, anything that the city decides to do here, they're opting in to do this, they're saying, we've identified a problem, we're trying to solve a problem. There's no obligation currently that the city acts to do anything. So from a strictly, you know, litigation standpoint, I mean, the safest thing to do is nothing. That's not a very satisfying thing to hear, if you're having to drive around on these terrible roads and, you know, have an unsafe condition. So it may very well be that the city would choose to act in some form, whether that's just going ahead and doing it, whether that is going through the petition process, but understand that going down any of those paths certainly opens up more corridors to be, you know, challenged in court, so that's the only point that I'm making, though.
Is your advice that I should play it safe?
My advice is always to play it safe, but I understand, you know, I'm but one voice among many here.
Well, my financial concern is that $700,000, what's the new estimate?
$15,000.
$715,000 would pretty effectively eliminate the street department's operating money for the year.
In all cases, we'd have to take out a loan for this. The hope is that we can get it reimbursed within, what, a 10-year period? Again, the range will be, some people will just pay it upfront, right, and some people won't, and they'll put it on, we'll put it on the tax rolls and.
Has the bank said what they will do? Because they own a lot.
They probably like us to float the loan through them.
They'll give us a discount.
So they have the properties assessed. I mean, I see their signatures, but.
And just to note on, if we were to proceed with this and take a loan, the interest on that loan would be paid, would be assessed to the property owners that are charged for the way.
That would be the intention. The other thing that we can include is the administrative fees charged by the county.
Which are about 3% about?
So the figure that Andy threw out there throughout, to begin with, was 4%, but we might want to up that a little bit.
To cover that.
Yeah, because 3% is what the county charges us to collect property taxes inside the city limits. All right, and they take that off of everything, taxes, assessments, whatever, and then the interest on the loan.
So, yeah, so what we'd be faced with then, the outright, until the terms of the assessments are paid off, would be the semi-annual loan payments.
So we would have to track that, and Andy has asked for that, you know, a special fund. I don't know that we'll do a separate fund, but we can certainly do special account lines to track the money in the revenue, and then that's how we'll know how much we can pay back on the loan year to year, and things like that, so.
And, you know, as the mayor has said, you know, professionally, he sees this university estates as an area that has been annexed into the city. Difficulties with this, these portions of the road, but it is part of the city with a long-term goal that I'm assuming that we would be able to, once improved, that we would be able to accept that road.
And once it's accepted, we maintain it like any other road in the city. I think that was one of the questions that was shot to me, of course, is like, okay, when would, you know, what would be the repair schedule of this? But once it's brought up to our standards at that point, we'd accept it. We wouldn't have a maintenance bond on, since we'd be doing it ourselves, I suspect. And then at that point, it becomes like any other road that we try repairing along the way.
And a useful life for this kind of repaving project is he's estimated 20 years. Now, does that mean you're going to have a pothole in the first five? I'm sure, but then.
That was, yeah, the only other concern with heavy equipment on the road, yes.
That was just one other thing, and you addressed this, but I just want to reemphasize that our bond counsel stressed is the idea that we accept that road at the end, because we can't put money into a road that's not ours. So right now, it's considered a private road. So we can go ahead and do the improvements now, with the understanding that we absolutely will accept it.
And that's an important distinction that I bet you brought up as well, is that while, again, while these streets may be located in the city, they are not city streets, and that's really the foundation of this entire problem going back years now, is just the fact that, you know, the, when these roads were being built, they were never brought up to the standards that they were supposed to be brought up to in order to be accepted by the city. And so now, you know, we've got basically no one in charge of these roads, and, you know, the city certainly doesn't want to have to spend, you know, an inordinate amount of taxpayer money on roads that aren't ours, but at the same time, we've got citizens living up there, you know, with some, you know, deplorable conditions on some of those streets, so it's a, it's a problem without an easy solution, and so my only point earlier was not to discourage the city from acting, it may, I mean, this council can certainly determine that this is a problem that we can fix, and that this is, you know, that the best way to go about doing that, but just to, again, to understand that we're doing so out of having identified a need, and then trying to address that need, as opposed to, you know, this is not an obligation that we would have in the same way that we would if these were city streets.
And to point out on the other. And to point out on the other side of these, this argument, of course, if it is a private road, we should not be giving building permits up there at all. And everything would stop dead right now. Okay, so if we're filing a letter of law, and it's plotted, but it's not, it is a private road. So we've got, we've got different sides of everything going on here, and we're trying to fix it, you know? And it's not, it's not going to be an easy fix, because as I said, there's lots of moving parts. A lot of it's your activity, or Debbie's going to have to writing up lots of little resolutions and ordinances. But the fact is, we're trying to, we're trying to get this up and rolling, you know, because it is part of the city at this point. Any other questions on that?
Just, so there's no doubt at all, Mayor, it sounds like you are behind this project.
I am behind this, yes.
Okay, thank you. Or ahead of this.
Why would I be sticking my, I play, if you want me to play it safe, I can do that too. I'll just tuck myself underneath the chat table here and hide for the next two and a half years.
I think it's something we should move forward on also, but I just wanted to make sure there was no doubt as to how you feel about it now.
And am I sensing, I usually get a sense of kind of consensus, but I, and I know this is a difficult situation. Are we, am I sensing that other council members also would be interested in trying to seek a solution with this through the assessment process?
I, I would agree, and once I've seen these signatures now and how many people up there have signed on, then I think that says a lot for what the community up there is asking for. They know what, they knew what the deal was when they signed this petition.
And I think Mr. Ward said he was going to go and try gathering some more too. So we should have an amendment to that as well.
I, and my apologies too, if I neglected to get this copy, I can get, we can get this scanned and out to, to all of you and to Law Director Lang, the documents that Mayor Law has. You got that, okay.
After, after attending that meeting up there at University Estates and listening to the citizens themselves, listening to their concerns, you know, I'm, I'm very much in support of seeing this go forward and seeing the roads, as a lot of you have, and it's, I think it's the right thing to do.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Member Nicely. Thank you, everyone that's coming on this. This is the first ward, and I wholeheartedly support us moving forward in this direction and applaud the mayor and his administration for, for sending us in the right direction. Having been up there on foot, jogging it with Andy Stone, the Public Works Director, I've seen up close and have heard through comments and emails the challenges that people have faced living up there, whether it's rolling an ankle or having difficulty navigating it with a car or a bus or. So again, I applaud moving forward with this. Know that it's difficult and challenging, but I think we can do this.
We'll look for stalwart volunteers for the assessment board and if people are interested. And we had, and that's a citizen volunteer board, it will be composed of three people. We had a great crew last time that I think did a lot of work in reviewing the cases, so. But we'll look towards moving it all forward then.
And if there's things that need to be done, let us know so we can keep it on the timeline, right? Okay. It's going to take all of us to do this, it's a problem that needs to be solved. And I think we can do it all together.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the comments and discussion. Next agenda item that I have is really a very brief update at this point, but is sparked in part by a comment made at a, at another meeting by Mr. Bartabout, electronic payments and online payments. And I scratched my head and thought, wait a minute, I think we're doing some of that now. We checked with Auditor Heck, we are indeed taking income tax payments online. And so thank you for sparking the sometimes wayward brain here. We were checking, and Service Safety Director Ron Lucas and our treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, and Auditor Kathy Heck are all working to see what we might be able to do. We have the software capability within our CMI system right now. Our next step is needing to find a third-party administrator for this payment. So this would mean potentially, if we can get this worked out with a third-party administrator, that people could make their credit card, or could make their utility payments either online or in the city building. And I know we've had a lot of instances where people coming up to the utility window and we say, cash or check? And so this, I think, would be an improvement, I think could potentially, so that we would receive faster payment, maybe more, more of the payment of the bills paid off in a timely manner. So I think this could be a real improvement. We're working on it. We have fees to, what kind of fees would be worked out and, and how those would be paid. We're hopeful. Questions, yes?
Very glad to hear. That's something I've been, I think, asking for for five years. Many people have been looking forward to one day when we can do, pay online, whether it's through our bank account or credit card if needed. I would just urge that we, for the third party, that we look at many options and don't just find one we think we like because the cost over a number of years could be quite high for the city if we're not careful about who we choose.
I actually just had that discussion with Ron Lucas today, Deputy Service Safety Director. And we have our third-party administrator that we have been very happy with for several years. And, but I told him that he is welcome to look other places. And actually, the treasurer and myself and Ron had gone to a bank, a local bank, and talked to them about it. And so he is looking at that. And I told him, he's contacted our, our software carrier, CMI, and he, and I recommended that, he asked them if they have any companies that they already work with that he might, they might refer and that he could look at, at more than one. So although, as I said, we're very, very happy with the one we use, I'm not necessarily pushing them. The only thing is whoever they choose, we have to be able to get the information from them to apply those payments to the right place, okay? We can't just get a lump sum of money put into our bank account. We have to have what we call an addenda file that shows, you know, who paid it and exactly how much. So it's just very important and, so that's, that's the big issue right there. It's not just a matter of choosing which bank has the best rates or whatever. They have to have the capability to send us those reports.
Does that have to be compatible with CMI? Is that what you're saying, or it just?
Yes.
Okay, something readable to the net line.
Something that we can upload into our system. Yeah, manually inputting that is, would really fall on the utilities department.
So this would really be a help. I mean, people can, if I'm correct, right now, that's how we do our utility bills. You can have the debit made directly from your checking account every month. But this would give some other people a feature. I know so many people use credit cards for anything from, you know, just buying a postage stamp at the post office to, to other things, so it would probably really help. Other comments, yes?
Just real quick, because I know that, Member Nicely, you did bring this up and mention this, but I think it's worth kind of reiterating is that there is a fee or could be a fee associated with these. And one of the things that we're looking at is whether it would be a flat rate fee or a percentage-based fee, a couple of different options, a lot of different options for using the service.
The way the fees are charged, and this has always been the issue, is who absorbs that? I'm not sure the city, oh, maybe they can't absorb that, but, you know, keep them water, the water, sewer and garbage are proprietary funds, and that money can only be used to support those funds. But not everybody charges the same fee, and the calculations are not just, they're all $2 or they're all 1.5%. It's usually a combination. There's a flat amount plus a percentage, and the percentages can change depending on the amount of money we're collecting that way. So it's, it's not an easy calculation, but as I said, Ron Lucas is working on it.
Much less to go shopping for it. And to tell you the truth, I don't do any of that stuff, so it's, it's not on my horizon and.
You don't want to.
I'm deferring to those who.
We've got some eager people, and thanks for your long-term encouragement, Councilmember Gosney, to keep reminding us to.
About every two years, I send everybody.
That's good. Okay, any other miscellaneous items for finance and personnel? Okay, finished.
We will move on to Member Gosney from the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is cruisin' schedule for the summer and into the fall. These are classic car cruisins, and then sometimes they do rock and roll music, old-time, classic rock and roll music. These are held on Court Street. Sometimes in the past, they've been in conjunction with city events like Boogie on the Bricks or Brew Week or, or sometime around that. I'm not sure about the dates this year in terms of those events, but the proposed dates for these are June 7th, July 26th, and September 13th. Two of these would be on Court Street between Washington and State, while the September one would be on Union Street between Court and College. I know the first two locations we've done before, I'm not sure about, about that third one that's, that's being proposed.
No, but we like it. It's an easier closure.
It is, it is easy for that little block.
We've done closures of that area for like the energy, sustainable energy festival, so it's not unusual location. It's just a, they've no, done a cruisin' that way.
And I don't, does anyone know exactly who organizes these? I know the Plains Lions Club has been involved in that.
Bill Olman, he's a post, postman from the Plains, he's with the Lions Club there. And what Jim Norris, I think, does the radio.
They like that diner, but, you know, the Uptown Business Association has asked for kind of like to be spread, spread around a little bit, so this is part of that.
And these are evening events, I think 5:30 was the time that they asked for. So if there's no, if there are no problems with that, we'll see a first reading for that next week. On miscellaneous, we, earlier tonight, we discussed the Brew Week and the possibility of suspending the parking fees in the parking garage for the Saturday event, which is sort of the headlining night for, to cap off that week. And so it's something that, I guess I'd like to open up for discussion. We do, have done this for Boogie on the Bricks for several years. I'm not sure, did we do the entire lot, parking lot, or did we do just above the whole?
Entire parking lot.
It's just easier for enforcement, kind of, and then you've also switched where the holiday parking is also in the parking garage.
I, I think it's, I don't see anything wrong with it. I think it's, it's a nice little thing we can do for the events to, I don't know if it makes people happier or if it's, it just helps, you know, helps alleviate the parking problem that would otherwise happen by giving them the place to, to put their vehicle.
This might actually be better because this is further down towards North Court, and therefore the, the traffic will not be tied up on Washington and Court to get to the parking garage. So it may make it easy actually in terms of how these things will flow. We hope, it's all new there.
Yeah, please.
This kind of wraps back to the ordinance appropriation, 2613, the engineering for the bike spur. It's kind of under transportation. And I've been getting questions from people because I don't think they know the history of why we accepted the grant in the first place, because we have the grant. And it's kind of been out there for a long time, and we haven't talked much about it. But I, I get questions on, why would you want to do that? And why would the city want to spend that money?
Let's jump back to that in just a minute. Assuming, unless, just want to make sure there are no, to see if there are any comments on the parking garage item for Brew Week.
No.
All right. I think it's probably a good idea. So we'll try to put something together for reading relatively soon. So, yeah, under miscellaneous, I'd be happy to discuss the bike path spur. I don't have the exact numbers, but.
I think it's about $700,000 that we'll be putting, who've got his grant money. We'll probably have to add another 300, I think.
Yeah, it'll be just over $1 million. For many years, the Hawk Hocking and Dina Bike Way had, a committee has identified is, how do you get to that business district from the bike path? So this is finally going to resolve that, kind of, questions.
And during the, the construction of the Laurel's, the nursing home there, there's conversation of how, how could they get to the bike path as well? There's conversation of trying to use the river's edge to get to the right way. In other words, work your way towards Courier.
Right.
But that's not really our property, and it's floodfront at that point. This would be pricey to throw a bridge across the Hocking at that point, somewhere in that area, Columbus, where Columbus Circle, I guess it is. But it adds another conduit to get us around on the bike path. It also would actually get you away from having to climb the hill, Columbus Road, which we'll be putting a bike lane in there anyway. But for those who really don't want to have to pedal hard. Well, the trend is to get away from a bike transportation, you know, as recreation, but towards transportation. So you want to make these connections, so it becomes an actual function of, how do I get to point A and point B, rather than just how about a cruise on the bike path?
As part, yeah. Councilmember Gosney and I were just talking, and it's part of the comprehensive plan, but also part of the bike plan. And does talk about, and it also, just as you're saying, that transportation beyond recreation. How do you make it a livable, walkable city? We have a city with residents where we have, over 25% of our, our residents use either, either on foot or on bicycles for transportation to work, to businesses, just as you're saying, out on Columbus Road. And we've had comments from people in, that this might be even transportation, make transportation for people who are working in Chancy, who might be on a more limited income. I've seen a fair number of people walking along Columbus Road, and they, some of them in Amesville, and just don't have a car. So this is just one more route for people.
And this dovetails with our, the, the ordinance you're putting through with the, the matching money for the mobility coordinator too, is in the county, because this will cover a part of that. I mean, essentially, the, eventually they get a, a system throughout the county where it serves people who don't own cars. Bicycling is one way to do it. I, if you're on a bike path, you realize how level it is, it's very easy to transport around. But as soon as you start, you know, I, I live at the top of Courier, so I, I know that's a hill just to go up Courier, just to get to Second Street there. It's a, I'm huffing and puffing by the time I get up there, and, and I've got a good mountain bike to do it. At the same time, the idea is that you could get conveniently, you know, from, in theory, Columbus Road all the way to the other end, to Nelsonville, or all the other end to Holzicklin.
So you answered, you pretty much said what I've been telling the public. Everything you said, I just felt like we need to get that out in the conversation. We're getting ready to appropriate that money at our next reading. And I thought it would be a good idea just to explain to people what our thinking was and what the long-term plans are in all these different groups, and they're kind of coming together. Because, you know, we are going to be spending about $300,000 in the end or so, so we just needed to. So I appreciate everyone's comments, thank you.
You're welcome. Kent, did you have comments on?
Maybe under another miscellaneous.
Well, let me just have a final comment on the bike spur. It is pricey, it's, it's expensive, and it's not something that we can afford to do often. I don't, you know, it, it does take money out of our transportation budget, and it's, I've talked to people about this as well. And it's, it's not something that we do often. But I think having this corridor of, of the city that is currently pretty difficult to reach by bike or by foot, I think investing this money and having the vast majority of it paid for through a grant, in my opinion, is a wise investment. So that's, that's what I've been telling people. All right, and is there another miscellaneous?
Just briefly, I was going to add that, I remember Nicely, myself, and the mayor were at the recent discussion, presentation by Michael Lockman about transportation. And there's, I believe, two more public hearings on that.
I think they're right, came and went, I think one was Saturday.
Almost today.
And one was today.
So I, I just wanted to encourage the community and, and members of council, if they haven't been, to, to go see.
There is a link on our website to get to it, and it's Athens Transit, publictransit.org, I think. He has a presentation of what, what the plans are. So you can check that out.
Please, Jeff?
One last miscellaneous. I attended the Green Fleet Committee last Thursday, and in addition to our usual business there, it was mentioned by the Assistant City Safety Director that we need a private citizen to be on, on the committee, in addition to council members and other city officials. And we don't have a private citizen. So I thought I'd throw that out there and let those that know, know that we need one. If there's a volunteer who really is enthused about getting the Green Fleet ordinance the way it's supposed to be done, done, then come and help.
When do you meet?
I believe it's every, we're, we're meeting monthly now. And the reason that is, is because the police department, for one of their, their grants, has to have a coordinating committee to oversee the grant. So the Green Fleet Committee became that oversight. So we're meeting every Monday, and it's the second or third Thursday of each month. I had to get back with you on that. I'm getting old, my memory fails.
Thanks for bringing that forward tonight. And so if there is anyone, Mayor?
Another miscellaneous, but get done with it.
So just, if there is any.